Hey, it's 6:07 November 6. I'd like to call to order the selectmen's meeting. Present, we have our select board, our town manager, our town clerk, and I see some faces I don't recognize. Deputy town clerk, fire chief. Now let's just announce our names. We'll start right here. Rick Dobson.
Alex Robinson.
Alex Robinson.
Bridie Armstrong.
Bridie Armstrong.
Chris Rowell.
Chris Rowell.
Roy Wood.
I'm Michelle Lord.
Kathy Kerwin.
Kathy Kerwin. Okay. Let's start our meeting with the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with open session. Open session is normally a two to three minute window to bring a concern forward. And judging by the crowd, this is probably some things to discuss. Who'd like to go first? Ms. Kerwin.
I just wondered if the town would consider, you know Haley's, that big field that the kids sledding in winter time? Well, for the last few years, it's only been plowed one time, or mowed one time. And so I've noticed last year, the kids, parents would bring the kids up and they would try to slide, just because the grass was so high, it stopped them, they really couldn't get traction. It's kind of little, but it's really the only, I don't know, I guess it's just kind of courtesy to the, free courtesy to the, you know, town kids of San Diego. Because it is a known sliding spot, it's a fun thing to do, it doesn't cost any money. And so anyway, I just wondered if you would consider maybe mowing it one more time?
And that's on the town cemetery lot?
Yes.
No, John Mow, no.
What's that?
I'm not sure how much. Find a line book for you, and then just ask.
Where's Dr. John?
Yeah, it's past the cemetery, it just may have been laid up.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I don't know if it's part of the house, right down there.
My colleague, he said that's definitely a courtesy. And they said it was the town that I guess paid them to mow it or something like that. So they kind of referred me.
Okay. We'll take that where it needs to go. Okay, next.
Am I on the agenda or am I open session?
Yes, sir, you're on the agenda. So hold on a minute. So there's no other open session discussion?
5G is a direct energy weapon, in case anybody is out there putting the Fidium fiber up and it's connected to 5G poles. 5G is microwave radiation, it is not electromagnetic. It is electromagnetic. And your health will go downhill, all of you, with 5G connected to your homes. And that's just a warning for everybody. It will desiccate the joints, your organs will start to fail. It's a slow death. In other countries, they're burning 5G towers.
Okay. There's no other open session. We're gonna move on to item nine, which is warrants and payroll, seventy-fourth, seventy-five, and seventy-seven.
We have a couple more in there, but because Josh had a bill at the very last minute, so there's an extra one there.
No, I'm not getting the check.
Pass them down, Josh. You can still get them first if you're on the.
On the latest warrant that we did this morning, Mrs. Peters came in, she had a check from last November that she had lost. So I voided that one and reimbursed her on this. So you're gonna see two election checks for her, and that's why.
And that's on the.
We're just replacing one of her checks.
Okay.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah?
This was the gravel they were talking about over on the Burrows Road.
Yeah.
That we ended up using as base.
Yeah, well, that's that one, yeah.
We were still able to use the material.
Used it as base, sorry.
Yes, because it would not compact well enough to use as surface material. I've already seen it.
You haven't seen the most recent on your digital?
Yeah, I did.
You don't, okay.
That may have been a number slightly off.
Gotcha. Nice, you won.
You should hold it back.
This is kind of them, but it's, we don't have any details.
Yeah?
It's way earlier than two minutes ago.
I think it goes up to the one o'clock, I mean, it's probably.
It's actually just a third of it.
Mm-hmm. The check I was talking about isn't that one? Okay, moving on. Item ten, old business. First light item is landfill.
We've kind of left that a little bit open. When I was going through the minutes, I didn't feel we had clear resolution on it. So I brought it back there. And one of the parties, Mr. Lemio, spoke to me earlier today and asked if we intended to survey that. And I said, well, I wasn't a hundred percent sure where we left things in the minute, so I put it back on the agenda for tonight. And I would pass Mr. Lemio's desire that the town survey that onto the selectmen to make the decision they feel is appropriate.
Have we, Michelle, have we seen anything from the registry of deeds on Butch handing that, giving that piece appropriate back to?
No, I haven't seen that. No, and Butch was in this afternoon while I was at the office. And I did find, in one of the landfill files, there are some deeds in the back. And it lists also a thirty-foot right-of-way. So I do have that file on Brian's desk for him to review when he has a chance. I can also check with the registry of deeds and see if anything has been recorded. He said it's been about a month and a half.
Okay. Go ahead.
Do you guys have the copy of, there's a copy of plans for that landfill?
Yes, I believe we do. I have a stack like this, Friday, on my desk.
But everything goes missing. I just wanted to make sure you knew that we're already.
I made part, I made it part of the way through, I haven't made it all the way through.
The other thing with that is, as we approached this, is that thirty-foot right-of-way, that Butch wanted us to include with that lot. So if we're looking for deeds and whatnot, we're gonna have to include that on the north side of the lot, that thirty-foot straight.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I think we'll have to survey Butch's piece. I don't think we're gonna have to survey.
George's piece.
George's piece, because that's pretty cut and dry on what that is.
So that's basically just update status at this point?
Well, unless you want to direct me to contact a surveyor to survey that. And I have no idea what the cost of that would be.
I don't either, I don't have any.
I think we'd have to go to the town first and see if there's even interest in.
And see if we have budget to do it, and if there's interest in doing it. I say we table that for the moment.
There you go.
I make a motion, table it. It's tabled. Okay, item B, storage pods, town hall cleaning process report. I don't know if that's you or Michelle, or.
Well, Michelle, Michelle's done the work I can do the report on. Or Michelle and Kelsey. So we've kind of gone with this plan. We didn't do it today because of the election. You know, we've pretty much wrung everything out of all of us here, I think, that we've got for the election. But the last two Wednesday afternoons, we've been over, and we've got the town manager's office cleaned out ninety-five percent. And we've got stuff set aside that needs to be shredded, some that need to come back, some that hasn't come back to our office, and some that need to be stored. And the next move is to take a look at the stuff in the basement, starbury that up so we can go through it. And we're gonna continue with our Wednesday afternoon progress on that. So positive progress. But it is a laborious task.
Mm-hmm. So we're making progress, though, that's good.
We are making progress.
We have a lot of trash.
Mm-hmm.
Trash.
A lot of it.
Mm-hmm. At some point, we'll have to address that with a dumpster or something.
We will. The amount that we found that needed to actually be shredded, we've brought to the office, and Kelsey keeps feeding it into the shredding machine. So we're doing that on-site ourselves. But we do have the big leaf contractor heavy-duty bags that there's probably six.
At least.
At least six of them that we need to haul out.
So we're just piling them in one room for the time being?
They're right, yeah. They're right in the entry of the main office.
Mm-hmm. Moving on, item C, update on the engineers on the town hall project.
Spoke with Mr. Gervoni yesterday by phone. They, he, and a construction engineer, or I'm not sure if I got the title right, construction, something, they're gonna be out next week. They have my cell number, they're gonna contact me. I'm gonna let them in and go through the building with them, and their purposes, so that they can get some more refined drawings and plans for us. Mr. Gervoni also has, he is gonna be sending me information on three roofers that are certified to do historic roofs on, slate roofs on historic buildings. He said there aren't many in Maine that do that. He's gonna give me the contact information on those, so I can contact them. So I'll, I will let anybody in this group here know, or I'll let everybody know when that's gonna take place, if anybody decides they wanna be present for that.
I'd like that. Okay. Item D, is discussion on committees, changes to the budget committee policy, budget committee appointments.
You guys all got the copy of what I suggested for. Essentially, the only thing you really need to change there is change it, as we discussed, that it would be one-year appointments appointed by this board. And you wanted to change the number to seven.
With one alternate, right?
With one alternate, that is correct. So if you, like I said, I've already got the changes done. Essentially, all I need to do is cotton base that into the.
Basically, it's just a policy change that we're gonna put in that policy manual?
Yes. But I do, you do need to make a motion and vote on that, if you want to do that.
Okay. We don't have copies of it yet. I actually might have. I might have brought it with me. Thank you. Do we wanna all read it and just make this happen right now?
If you make it happen right now, then you can do your appointments.
Right.
But you really can't do your appointments until you make those changes.
Right, this is basically just the policy change itself.
This is nothing but a policy change, cotton paste of, but any policy changes have to be done by a vote of this board.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll just read this, and then we can make a decision. It says, proposed policy change for budget committee. Per discussion and vote at the select board meeting on October sixteenth, twenty-four, town manager has prepared the following changes to be placed in the town policy manual to replace the current language under the budget committee section in the board's and committee's policy. Budget committee attends the budget review sessions, during which the board of selectmen may also be in attendance, to review the budget requests and proposals for the coming fiscal year and to submit their recommendations to the board of selectmen, and shall consist of, town treasurer and town manager will be permanent advisory members, seven voting members, one alternate member, all members to be appointed by the select board annually. That's.
Those last two or three lines are the only changes. Most of that is from the.
Same language.
Or the current policy.
We'll need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Vote. Okay. We have a new policy for budget committee. Did we wanna talk about any of the other committees? Because you have committees plural on the agenda. Did we wanna?
My, yes, I did kind of wanna talk a little bit about this. With what's moving in the, with the town hall, I really wanna get that town hall committee back together and meeting and talking with me and helping give me some direction. Because one of the big things I've got on my plate right now is I'm researching and working on writing a grant, a national historic preservation grant, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five match, up to thirty thousand dollars, that I'm kind of hoping might cover our roof costs or a large portion of our roof costs on the town hall. But I could really, really kind of use some assistance and direction from this town hall committee. So I would like, if we are talking about going back to kind of the work sessions on some Wednesday nights that are off from the regular meetings, I'd really like to be that, that to be on the next work session, if we can pull that group together.
Okay.
And the other committee that I really think is important for us that I'd like to have in place before we start putting our road budget together for next year is I'd like to have that road committee together.
Do we wanna do one at a time, or do we wanna do them all?
I think one at a time would be a lot easier on everybody.
I do too. While we're on that town hall subject and before we leave this, question three passed in here as I could see.
Yes.
Is there any process we know of to throw a hat in the ring?
I, that is something I still need to look at. I figured, do we let the dust settle a little bit before I head down that road? Because if you've watched, if you've watched the news in the last twenty-four hours, there's a lot of dust right now.
There is.
But yes, we're gonna look into that.
Okay, good. So what we need to decide is, next Wednesday, if we want to have a work session to assemble the town hall committee, get the people in here? Is that what you've got in mind?
That's what I've got in mind. And I don't know if it needs to be a type of reappointment or that, or just bring them back together.
Probably this should be, because there's gonna be some restructuring within the committee, because I was the chair, and it's a conflict of interest.
Then we could kind of do what we've done with the budget committee. We could bring them in for an informal work session.
Let them.
Information session, let them talk, tell us what they want us to hear, and then we can, if we need to make a policy, we can do that. Because right now, there's no policy for a town hall committee. And as I've read the records on that, the best committee wanted to remain an ad hoc committee. And we probably need to see if that is still. And you were there, so you remember why you chose to be an ad hoc committee. And.
I think we need to look at the whole structure and bring all the people together all in one room and sit down and talk about it.
Right. And then if we feel that there needs to be a policy, I can write a draft of a policy, bring it back here for our regular meeting on November twentieth, and you can evaluate it and vote on it at that time.
And this committee's more just informational and advisory, so to speak, but I think still, there needs to be an official committee.
There are a lot of people very passionate about this cause. I could ask about what we're doing with the town hall, probably as much, if not more than anything, since I've been sitting in that office. And I think we, if we've got a lot of people that wanna put that passion into working to help things happen, I'd like to work with them.
So I would move that we have you contact the previous budget committee and invite them to next Wednesday's work session.
Town hall committee.
Town hall, town hall committee, I'm sorry. And invite them to a work session next Wednesday at six.
I will do so. Michelle, you got those names and.
I don't.
I do.
Can you get that to me?
I do, yes.
Tell me, John, what's your?
I think we end up with twelve or thirteen at the end of it.
I'm saying, you have a good few.
They might be in your channel before, Michelle.
Oh, maybe.
Yep. I have a copy of the whole chatter and all of it, so. Okay, moving on. An update on our Microsoft three sixty-five.
Did we, oh, before you move on, budget committee appointments. We need to make those, you need to make those appointments official tonight for the budget committee, as we discussed in our last work session. So we've got the policy change, so you've got seven and an alternate.
Right.
And we have, and I forgot the date, but I left it right on my desk.
I don't have the list of names. Dr. Abbott.
Yes, I was gonna say, I think we can.
I think we can get through it.
Okay, yes. Ron Taylor, Shelley.
Blockler.
Blockler.
You were looking right at Matt.
I was looking at Matt.
Patty Pauldor.
Myself. Matt Bell.
Matt Bell is gonna be the alternate, and there was one Kathy. Kathy Hall was not gonna be able to be there, but wanted to be on.
Oh, not Cynthia Hall.
Cynthia Hall, I'm sorry.
Cynthia Hall, and we had.
And Diana Bowley also.
Diana Bowley, so that doesn't add up.
And you were looking for Elizabeth Moore.
That's a.
Because you haven't found Elizabeth Moore, so maybe it's contacted different issues.
Well, I know Matt told me he wanted to be an alternate. If we wanna leave.
The other we couldn't get hold of, right?
The other one we couldn't get hold of, no.
No.
So we take the type of ones that are here.
I was gonna say, we can appoint the ones that are here, and then I could, I can talk to the ones that were not and figure out who needs to be appointed, so we can do that at the next meeting.
Right.
If you wanna do it that way.
We've got a little issue, because we've got eight people. Actually, we've got nine people, Cynthia Hall's interested, right? Two, three, four, five, six.
I'm not so.
Well, we only had seven here, right?
Cynthia wasn't here, Diana wasn't here, Matt wasn't here.
So you'd have eight with the alternate. But Matt also made it sound like to me, when I had the conversation with him, that he'd be okay stepping aside.
Yes, I felt that, too.
And so we could.
So we wanna revisit what we just did with the seven members, or how do we wanna address this?
I, my thought is that you appoint the seven members that were here for that informational session, appoint them to the budget committee, and then we'll come back and revisit the alternate position.
Okay.
See, there was only six here, weren't there? Bridie, Patty, Paul, Doc Cabot, Shelley Blockler, and Rhonda Taylor.
Patty.
Patty and Paul Davis, Doc Cabot, Shelley, Bridie, Rhonda.
Rhonda, that's six.
Six. So if we did that, if we had Cynthia and Diana, then one of those would end up being an alternate, if Matt stepped away, and that would work, is what we've got.
So why don't you, why don't you appoint those six, and then let me call Diana and Cynthia and see.
Which one?
Who wants to do what.
Okay.
And then you can make those appointments at the next meeting. Is that acceptable, everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll need a motion on the floor to appoint the people that were present. So I'll make a motion, we appoint Paul Davis, Patty Davis, Richard Cabot, Shelley Blockler, Bridie Armstrong, and Rhonda Taylor to the budget committee. And Cynthia Hall and Diana Bowley will be contacted. One will be an alternate, and one will be a permanent member. We'll appoint the six tonight. Make that as a motion.
Seven.
Vote. So we've appointed the six members that were present to the committee. Brian is gonna follow up with a call to the two that weren't present that had interest.
And what I'll probably do is send out an email, because we probably want that group getting together fairly soon after January one. What I have numbers.
Okay. We set to move on?
Yeah, we can go to Microsoft.
Microsoft, where are we at with Microsoft?
We've got the license, Caleb's working, our Eagle IT is working on doing all the IT black magic that they have to to get us legal and happy and functional. We looked at the warranty. Michelle and I really feel that we might wanna throw that onto next year, not do anything with that now, but put that as a question mark for the budget committee and the select board for our next budget cycle. I'm not real warm and fuzzy about the needs for that warranty, and I don't think Michelle is either, but I think we need to have a little more conversation on that. I think for now, we've pulled off on that.
Mm-hmm. And going right into that, item F, the town cloud update as well.
Town cloud has been a little bit of a problem, as much on our end as theirs. We've had so much going on in the office that we have not, with the election, with other issues that we've discussed, we haven't had a time when we can connect everybody's schedule up to sit down and talk about, talk about that. We're gonna try to do that before the next meeting. But because we haven't done anything with that, I did get Eagle on the phone and got them to help me out getting access to the Old Town website, and we started posting stuff on again until we get the town cloud up and running.
All right, moving on. Item G is. All right, moving on, item G is winter parking ban.
Uh, we discussed that already. And I did post, I did post that on our website and, and Facebook as discussed, and I'll probably try to do regular weekly reminders until we get the first snowstorm. But it was also brought up, we might wanna do some signs. And I have suggestions from Chris about what we, what he thought we ought to do for, for signs.
So at this point, the winter parking ban is a suggestion, and without signs, it's not enforceable, correct?
I believe that is correct. If Mike says it's correct, I'm sure it's correct. Sign.
And we talked briefly about the areas that would have a winter parking ban on them, basically the downtown areas and the paved side streets.
Yeah, I think one of the big concerns was Church Street and parking area in front of the Veterans Memorial. It's kinda what I gather is.
So how many you thinking we're gonna do here?
I think it was, what, six maybe, we thought it was?
Yeah, looks like six signs would cover it. These are permanent signs, or a post that you put in, put the sign up and down in the wintertime, or?
I think we put them up as permanent signs like other communities do.
And just from the months of the, of the date to date?
That's my recommendation.
Have we, have we scoped out the cost of doing that for the signs?
Uh, I have not, uh, I've got a ballpark idea that it's probably gonna run us about a thousand bucks. But, uh, 'cause we have to buy signposts, and that's just based on the corner signs that I, the new corner signs I purchased for, um, the line road.
In what budget does that come out of, just the road, general road budget?
Um, there's actually a sign line item in there.
They're two different signs. I think, I think they only funded one, I'm not sure about that, but.
But as it stands right now, we could take that out of the winter roads or out of the.
Brian?
Yes.
You might wanna check what we have for an ordinance in terms of roads, um, because I believe the board has passed that for any, anything is enforceable. You might tell me something different, but.
I, I can double check that.
I think there's one posted on our website, but I believe it was never actually approved, which is not handy.
I'll look into that report back the next meeting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where is this winter roads policy? Well, the only one I found is winter roads, and it covers plowing, and that's it.
No, no, not that one. It might not be put out.
Yeah, I don't see any specific line item for signage, other than. I see paint crosswalks and some things like that, I don't see any that, label, just signage.
Street signs.
The signs don't even do any good, the town doesn't approve an ordinance.
We'll, we'll look into that, yeah.
I don't see it here on the website, though, we're just hoping to see if we can find it.
Right there, I found it, Michelle, finally, it's a tone division, street signs.
I will re.
I think it's traffic control.
I will, I will, I will research that and bring, bring something back the next meeting.
It's directly addressed.
So not only do we have to decide on signs, we have to look at the policy that we have on having signs, correct?
Correct, so we probably wanna table this one for now.
That's what I'm saying, and I think we should table it until we investigate it all further. Make a motion to table that one for the moment. Okay, moving on to item H, ATV and snowmobile club representative.
That one's for you.
Okay, we talked a while back, when Larry Daggett showed up. And we talked about discussing with another club about our signs and.
Right.
What to do, uh, I got ahold of Alex Robinson. Dover Rovers, right?
Yep, Dover Rovers ATV Club.
I guess we'd like to discuss with you on what our options are as far as you helping us out, if you would like to take our roads as part of your club.
I, I think I talked with my club about it, and we are in favor of doing it. We kinda wanna know what, what you guys are expecting for signs. State policy or their requirements are, assign every quarter mile on both sides of the road. And they're both thirty bucks a sign, so if that's the case, then that'd be too much for us.
Right. I know we have, we have a bunch of them out, and some are tipped over.
So the signs that every quarter mile, both sides of the road?
That's what the, on a state highway.
So there's eight signs per mile of road that we have?
I, I think we figured out last time, it was half a mile on a town road, I think that's.
I don't know of any policy that is stated for town. I think it's up to the town, you guys, to decide what you would pick for signs, whether it's just at every road entering, or the corners, um, where you would want some other signs.
What do you feel your club can do?
We can, um, help, um, or we can come out and put the signs you have back out, I would need to go and find out where they are and stuff, but. And it's hard knowing without knowing how many miles of road that you have open, and also. We could definitely do it at every entrance, any road, it would be, uh, you get access to EV route, and then we could do it at the end of every road, so end access. A few, few speed limit signs here and there on the road.
Yep.
I was under the impression that it would be covered under a grant, but I've been told that I was, that where it's not a trail, it's a road, that's, you won't give me any money for it, so.
Okay.
We should probably try to find the.
Out signs?
No, yes, but what exactly, there must be something somewhere that says exactly what roads open, how many miles, where the stop is, where the start is.
You must have like a road and a trail inventory list for the town somewhere, I think.
So.
It was on the wall in the town office, but I don't know how accurate it was.
Was it just a map, Bridey?
Just a map.
And then.
And I do know that you can do pieces, so. To research it, you're gonna have to go back.
Research this a little bit more.
We can do that.
I mean, this year is kind of a, it's not now, but.
Right.
It's gonna be for next year.
Right, it would be, we wouldn't be able to do it all at once, it would be a work in progress.
Yep.
We could go and get all the signs that are there up, but springtime is busy for us hooking up the trail and stuff, so. I wouldn't be able to guarantee that I'd have them before that season.
Are the signs supposed to come down?
As far as I know, it's town policy.
Okay.
If they're on a metal sign, posts, and permanent, then I don't think they have to come down. I know in Dover they don't.
It's good to know, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I, I know they used to take them down and put them back up, but I don't know why.
They were on metal posts.
Yep.
And they're metal signs, they're aluminum signs.
They got them, I think they got them to the city first.
Should we check with the state and see if there's any signs available?
Do some research on that.
All right, we'll, we'll do a little more research, and we'll get with you, Alex.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before we move on, I move that we just table this until we have more research done.
Yep.
It's tabled. Okay, item I, accept donation to the fire department from Linda Hall.
I believe that's what we have right here in front of us, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Uh, we received this in the mail, uh, we didn't get it onto the agenda last, last meeting, and we just need the select member to formally accept that, so Matt can have some money.
I wanted to make a payment, you'll do, but.
I see that.
Do you wanna elaborate on what the gift is, Matt, just so everybody's on the same page?
Um, it was, yeah, just a check from Linda, we went out and helped her, her husband, um, at one point while he was undergoing a lot of cancer treatment. And I think since he's passed away, and she sent that to the town, just as a thank you for, for helping him out.
And accepting this gift, it would go into the, this would go into the, the, uh, fire department's budget?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept the gift, um, as written from Linda Hall. It's a vote. Okay, moving on, item J, um, an update on the Mill Street cat issue.
I, addressing the audience as well as the select board here, I, I have to be kinda careful, because we've hissed me or ears that fall under confidentiality. We, uh, we've made decent progress on the cat problem. I initially had met with Mrs. Sebastiano and asked her to kinda try to corral her cats a little bit, and that proved to be ineffective. Uh, so, uh, talked to the animal control officer, we had him start trapping stray cats in accordance with main law. They were trapped humanely and transported, we trapped eight and transported them to a approved animal shelter in Lincoln. Uh, since that happened, uh, we had some concerns expressed to us, and we had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Mrs. Sebastiano, and she invited us in last week. We had a great deal of concerns about her safety, about the safety of the property. Uh, I then contacted Department of Health and Human Services, they've assigned a case, a caseworker, and really, that's probably all I can say in public about that. We're working on trying to get her out, if that's what you're gonna ask for now.
No, that's not, what I wanna know is, where I work for Pinterest, we have programs that can assist people that, I know she's in a bad living state, and I, I respect confidentiality, so don't say a word. So I'm wondering if we can look into getting her on a program that might repair the things in her house that need to be done. You don't have to say anything.
I, I think in all honesty, and, and Matt was with me when I went on this little visit, I think we might be beyond that in damage, in structural damage from.
Okay.
We'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Is that, you agree with that?
I agree with that, but just everything is, that can be done to help her is being done, Brian's taking care of that, and.
Yeah.
The best route for her is going to happen as long as she lets it, and. Everything will be hopefully better soon.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate everybody looking into it, but I, I haven't been in for about three years, so, um, I didn't know, we have, you guys know more than I know.
Well, and, and again, we just really can't discuss that in respect of her privacy.
I understand.
Okay, so that's an update, making progress, and let's move on, item K, our Veterans Day ceremony.
Uh, we have, and I gotta give credit, a lot of credit to Alan Burgess at the Recovery Center. He has really stepped up and helped with the planning and stuff on this. I talked with Brian Milton of the Legion in Guilford. So we've actually put a ceremony together that we're gonna kick off at ten thirty Monday morning here at the Veterans Memorial. I was unable to get, uh, a band to help with that, I got a, I, I checked with the local school district, and I think I can just, the most polite thing to say is they weren't interested in participating. I'm just gonna leave that at that. Uh, so we're gonna be doing, uh, we're gonna essentially Bluetooth the National Anthem to kick things off. We're going to, uh, take the old flags down, that were the torn up, tattered flags that I temporarily replaced, but I'll put those back up Monday morning, so we'll have the Boy Scouts are actually gonna formally take that down and replace the old flags with new flags that we've purchased, put that back up. I'm gonna say a few remarks as a veteran, Paul Davis is gonna say a few remarks, and, uh, we're gonna observe a moment of silence as close to eleven AM as we possibly can. Uh, the significance of that, just real quickly for anyone that doesn't remember their high school history is World War One, the armistice that ended World War One was the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month of nineteen eighteen. And the Legion is gonna do a little thing, and, and so it's brief, we're hoping brief, dignified, and very positive to the community, that's the goal.
Okay, that's exciting. Okay, moving on, item L, fire department billing out for town, out of town resident motor vehicle crashes.
We're gonna turn this over to Matt, because he is.
Do you want this, do you want me to go now, or do you want anybody else need to go first, I don't, doesn't matter.
Nope, you need to just present what you.
Okay, so this was brought to the last board before about, um, billing for out of, it's stated as out of town residents, but mainly what it is for is for corporations, large trucking companies, absolute neglect, um, that would allow us to bill an insurance company for our time to recover and recoup some costs on like a eighteen wheeler rollover, um, or something along that line. Pretty much every town around here is doing it now, I know Dover does, I know Guilford does, I know Dexter does. So most of these companies, insurance companies, they're, they're already pretty well aware of this, they kinda expect it, and I think it's time that we just kinda get on board with the process. So basically, what we would do is we would, um, we would sign onto a contract with a company that does this, it's a fire recovery company. There's no costs for the services, except for they take a twenty-two percent of whatever's collected. So you get your, anything above the twenty-two percent comes to you. Uh, most departments like Dover, you know, they just set up a capital reserve account that all that money comes into, and when it's time to purchase equipment or something like that, that comes up. Um, so what it all kinda came from is, last year, we had the, um, paving truck up on Route twenty, uh, no, Route, yeah, Route twenty-three.
Route twenty-three.
Uh, by Bean, Bean Hill Road has rolled over. Two days' worth of manpower trucks, everything out there. Um, what I did, I kinda drafted up a bill of what something like that would look like, um, if you guys want to. Just kind of a breakdown of what, what these departments are charging per hour for engines on scene, rescues on scene. engines on scene, rescues on scene, your manpower hours, hazardous materials cleanup, that sort of stuff. And unfortunately, the printer ran out of paper. I'll get you all a copy of this, but this is kind of the rates that this company goes by. So you get your motor vehicle accidents, level two is just a, like an extrication, car fires. You can go through all those different things, but it's really by your discretion. Um, if somebody from Dover coming through to go to work gets in an accident, this is all by the department and by the town's discretion. And that is not a situation where I feel anyway that that person should get charged. Their insurance company should have to pay. The only way that I really see this going is if it's a, like I said, large corporation, their insurance company, or unfortunately maybe like a DUI kind of thing where you can recoup the cost with somebody that is doing something foolish. The old board was not on board with it at all. So I kind of just wanted to put it on you guys and see if that's something that you think that Sangio should start in.
Just so Matt, just so you know, Matt is not out there treading water on his own on this topic. I initiated the discussion with him to see if we were doing it because I've been affiliated with several fire departments in the state, still in with a couple. And like he said, almost everyone is doing this. And provides minimal revenue, but in these situations like he's talking about, it does make a difference. And, uh, I would strongly recommend that the board, uh, approve this.
So who manages this and who determines what and what is not billable?
So basically what we would have, we would have a online service that this company would issue to us if we feel that it's billable. And by we, I mean myself and Brian together would determine whether we think that that should be billed. And then you put in an incident report into this reporting system and they take it from there. They put in the insurance information of the company and basically a run report of what you did. And they see where on that sheet that falls in, they do up the numbers, they submit a bill. Not every time a bill is paid, sometimes they don't, but some, some of them do. You know, they can go as far as taking that legal for you if you really wanted to, but most places don't do that. It's just if they pay it or if they don't. Yeah, okay.
And that company takes a administrative fee out of what they collect?
They take 22% out of what comes to you. That's the only thing that they charge. There's no, I did speak with the woman, I had a Zoom call where they're trying to get a overview of how everything works. Um, so there's no setup fee, there's no, the only other fee that there would ever be, she said that if you don't do, um, at least $2,500 a year in order to keep your account, you would pay a $250 fee. But if you don't do it and you don't want to keep your account, they just stop services.
Now, there must be, so if... Does, does every, every incident get reported and they just bill? Or do we have to have, do we have to have a policy?
Every incident gets reported as far as in our main fire reporting service, but basically we would put a separate incident report in this service if we wanted it to be billed. Otherwise, if you don't put it in there, they don't have any...
So we could very easily write a policy.
That's where I was going with it. Like, like Matt said, if, if, if people that are residents, taxpayers in the town of Sangioville are exempt from this, we have to have a policy indicating that.
So they do this every day, um, so she actually sent me a, this is just a, like a sample, like ordinance of what they kind of send to departments. Obviously, it would be different if you guys wanted to word it different, but this is just a sample that she sent Dover. Cause Dover uses this exact same company. I think Dexter uses the same one as well.
I believe Newport does as well.
It's just, it's Fire Recovery USA. It's a big corporate...
Basically, the policy would be pretty simple. We just steal the Dexter and Newport's. Sit down, take a look at it, make a couple of edits and then throw it before you guys to see what you want to do with it.
So for tonight's discussion, what we need to do is decide if we want to move forward with drafting a policy.
I would say that's probably a good place to start.
Just so you guys know, I think Brian's on the same page as me, but for you guys to know, for everybody in town to know, the only reason that I even bring this up is because what I envision is probably around 10, maybe 15,000 a year to be recovered, to go back into equipment or whatever for the department. And only for these big, you know, Chimbro comes through with a crane and it tips over on Route 23. Their insurance company's gonna pay to recover some of that. This asphalt truck that's out of Massachusetts, somebody's gonna pay to recover some of that. Somebody from, even, even if it's Newport, a family coming through, it's all discretionary. I don't feel like somebody coming through from Newport going to MoveSed, gets in an accident, they should have to pay. But I think these big corporations that have insurance companies that are going to expect that bill, everybody else is gonna do it. The insurance rate's going up no matter what.
And the caveat behind that is too, is you go on a car accident where the family from Newport, for example, comes through and maybe one person gets transported, three or four others get signed off. The wrecker gets called, the cleanup's done, you talk to maybe an hour, hour and a half.
As opposed to this asphalt truck that was two days and, you know, nine hours of manpower and hazmat and just everything else.
So the concern would be that if there's gonna be a fee applied to people from out of town, it pretty much has to be cut and dried. Sangioville residents.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what we can do is, I'll, I can get ahold of Dexter and Newport and have them send me copies of their policies. Dover actually does ordinance. I don't think we necessarily need to go to an ordinance level for this.
I'm not sure how we have to do it, but, um, basically from what I understand Dover, their ordinance reads that anybody from out of town will be, or can be billed. But then beyond that, they use discretion, so...
For anything, any accident?
They, their ordinance reads that they could be. It doesn't say that they will be, but they could be. And that just opens them up to if somebody goes out and does something foolish, gets in an accident, they're drunk, the, the car catches on fire and out there for hours and hours, they can recoup that money from somebody. But...
Get the bill for charges of that and people, for a rollover.
Yeah. So it's, I, I think if you write it up as anybody that is not a Sangioville resident could be billed for these services as a recovery and at the direction of the town manager and the fire chief. And then that kind of leaves it on, on us whether we decide to even do that.
My only fear with that whole thing is if two different people have two different incidents and we apply a fee to one and not the other and the two will sit there discussing it at the local bar, you know, that, I would...
Yeah.
I would be worried that it would have to be, we do or we don't, the policy says this and...
My thing with it, I don't agree with doing it for an ordinary family unless they've done something that is unspeakable and...
And like you said, it's probably gonna be something that their insurance is gonna pay off then.
Oh yeah, they are, um, and that's usually what it is.
Let's take a look at how Dexter, Newport, Dover, I, I think I actually know how Dover's is written because I've said what we put in place. But Dexter, Newport, I think Guilford has this.
Guilford does, yeah. I'm not sure how much they use it.
Let's, let's look at some policies and we can bring our, we can bring a report back to the next, next meeting on this.
If there's any way that we can do some kind of wording, then it's only, you know, corporation or...
Yeah, I think Jeff's right. We can get into a
You can.
Kind of...
I'm not, I'm not close to doing it. I don't want to end up in a situation where somebody got charged and somebody else didn't and then all of a sudden we've got something blowing up in our face. I, I think that we need to write a policy and then we need to stick to it.
Right. I'm a hundred percent fine with it either way. I just, the old board didn't even look twice at it. I kind of wanted you guys to be able to have the option. Just because if, if somebody goes across the line to Guilford and they get in an accident, it, their, their insurance company's gonna be billed.
Soon.
Just...
Right.
Kind of figure out...
And there's, there's ways to... We could do, you know, heavy commercial equipment.
Right.
When you're out over an hour or whatever, there's something to put into that.
We can probably figure something else. We want to do it for only, you know, a commercial company with over 20 and a fleet or something that we can do. I don't know how, but we can figure it out and we can look at the, the other policies and build from there.
I'd like to move that we have a copy of the surrounding towns and then bring that with your opinions to the next select board meeting.
Already wrote that in my notes.
Good deal. Okay, moving on. Item M is foreclosed property.
I'm gonna allow, we're on the shelves here. I'm gonna let her take this one.
Okay.
Okay, so this couple, um, owns a house on Honeywell Avenue. It's Diana Barley's old house. Um, they have been making small payments, seventy dollars, a hundred dollars. The, the day came, November 1st, nothing. They have not been, they have the rest of their taxes for 22, which is what we're foreclosing on. So the option now is, um, we'll do a letter. I'll send one certified in one regular mail. Um, give them like 30 days to respond. Are you gonna finish paying off the tax? Give them an option to, you know, try to recoup their house. The only problem with that is that, well, not a problem, but usually the town requests them to pay all the taxes today. So if they're only paying a hundred dollars here and seventy dollars there, I'm not sure that they're gonna be able to do this. So, um, that's just, that's the next step is to send it out. See what I get for a reaction. Then it will come back to you guys and what do we do next?
Do we have to, do we have to collect it all or do we, do we enter into a, an arrangement with them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, they've had 28 months to pay the taxes.
And they've been working on an arrangement currently?
No, it's just been...
They're just not paying their taxes?
No. They, when they got the 30-day notice that what, we were gonna foreclose, all of a sudden I started getting payments. So, um, at this point, nobody had the chance to do a payment arrangement. They either come up with the, the cash or we solve the problem.
Now, is that house occupied or is it empty?
It's empty.
It's empty. I thought it was.
Yep. So, and I'm not sure if some of the rats that were down on Gould, on the Gould property have traveled over to the other property, you know, same room, but not sure.
Get rid of them twice?
Maybe, I don't know. So, um, I don't know if we want to put signs up like no trespassing. I know that the doors and stuff, you know, there's some deterioration on the building. I'm not real sure what you want to do on that avenue. If we do go to the point that we need to build, bid this out, we now fall into that new law, we have to approach a broker. At least get three, if, you know, if one broker says no, not touching it. Try and get three different brokers. Any profit we make goes to the old owner.
Goes to what?
Goes to the old owner.
Okay, so at this point, you need to send them a final foreclosure notice, correct?
Yeah, like we've taken care of the house. Yep.
I mean, technically, we own the property as of now.
Right.
Okay.
We're just giving them a final opportunity to pay the taxes off and we'll essentially release the property back to them.
Right.
And that letter has not been drafted and sent, right?
No, not yet. I've drafted it, but I have not signed it out yet. I was waiting for your, any input that you might have done, but it will go out tomorrow morning.
I would think it would be fair to give them a final opportunity to pay in full.
Oh, I would think so, cause, you know, it's gonna be work and expense for the town to take this, uh, again, another questionable property. And if they're willing to come up with the money or make a payment arrangement, you know, that's kind of win-win for us.
That's correct.
So right now, their balance is $3,868.24. From this point, I will start documenting if I spend 15 minutes working on this. If I spend, you know, certified mails, all of this gets documented because if we do send this to a broker, we need to recoup our costs.
Right, bill it to the property.
Yep.
So we don't need any motion on that tonight?
Nope, this is just an FYI. This is where we scanned. Unless you have something special that you want me to do.
But we technically own it now.
We own it, yes. It is our property right now.
I do think we should...
I know, but I mean, give them, we could send them a letter, but we should put no trespassing signs on it if we technically own it.
Yes, you are correct.
I agree with that.
And I...
We technically own it. You don't want people there slipping and falling and
Right.
so on and so forth.
Well, and this is, um, when we took the Gould property, that was suggested and it didn't take place. And there were people rolling in and out of that building, which I don't know why, but they were...
I can make sure that takes place within the next few days.
Okay, so we're gonna put, uh, no trespassing violators will be prosecuted, something like that?
Sure, whenever I can buy the signs, I'll...
I make a motion, we put the no trespassing signs to it and move forward with it.
One second.
That's what we're doing. Okay, moving on to item 11, which is new business. Item A is a Board of Appeals, which as I understand does not exist.
That is the problem. Because, uh, the planning board has brought a issue to us that needs to go to the Board of Appeals and, uh, I don't know if it was Bridie or Blaine, but one of them pointed out to me with a certain amount of glee, which concerned me a little bit, that we have no word of appeals. So how do we want to go ahead with handling this?
Have we ever had one?
Yes.
Yes, it's normally three members, correct?
Five.
It's five.
They just don't be up enough for it to be very active. I mean, I think it's been at least 10 years since we've had an appeal. I set the board up the last year I was there and then the, no appeal came through, so we didn't have to use them.
Now, do we need a specific Board of Appeals or can it be handled by the select board?
I believe you're gonna want a Board of Appeals.
Separate a Board of Appeals.
You have an ordinance.
Yes.
We do.
Because the Board of Appeals, if they want, if the petitioner wants to take it further than the Board of Appeals, uh, state law basically has it go to the Superior Court.
Right.
So this is not a place where you want to be substituted in selectment for, for a Board.
Brad, do you remember who, who was part of that board?
Paul Davis is on it.
Eric Stumpf was one that I saw listed.
Yep, he never actually served, but Eric's a lawyer and very he was, he'd be well versed on the legal, um, verifications of sitting on this board. I'd recommend him.
And I talked to Eric about his tree situation there, but he did take care of it for us. And, uh, I'm, I'm more than happy to reach out to Eric.
Do you remember the other members?
Rick Pellerin was on it, but he's got some house issues now, so you can call him, but I don't think you can say yes. Um, I think Denny Wark was on it. If you look in the last town report. I know Cynthia Hall has previously served. I think it best bet is to get people who have previously served because it's an in-depth process and it requires some training. As to what you legally can and can't do, so...
Now, our ordinance says there needs to be five. Is that a state law or is that just what we chose as a?
That's what's in the policy manual.
That's just our poli-, our policy or state policy?
That is what was written. When I looked at the, when I looked at the policy before I came over here tonight, that was the key thing, was five members.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I, I don't know if you did the policy. I don't know what you did for reference.
That's back in the nineties.
I don't see any reason to change it. I just was curious if it was something that we adopted as a policy, if it was state law.
You have to have an appeal board, I believe. State law exists. And, and I, there are some guidelines and I believe your ordinance still meets those guidelines. I don't think they've changed. But I couldn't swear that, so you might.
So basically what we need to do is, I, I guess have you direct me to find people willing to serve and then we bring their names to the next meeting for appointments if, unless you want to do something different.
Has to be five or can be three?
Well, she.
Has to be five, but it's an alternate.
Yeah.
Our, our policy states five. I don't know if that's, somehow I think that may be a state requirement or state law that have to five or a middle.
So the situation we had that brought this to light is how time sensitive? This needs to happen right away? Is that, I guess that's what I'm asking?
There's no reason to put it off.
Right.
But, uh.
There are timelines. Once, once, once you get an appeal, there are timelines.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
That is written in the policy, but, um.
And in law.
So, something we really ought to make sure we have a board of appeals appointed by the next meeting possible.
Okay. So we need a motion for this. We need to, we need to tell Brian what to do.
Existing ordinance could take them off in their point three. They'll have to act.
At a time?
Yeah.
Oh, I could say that.
Wonder if it's alternating terms?
I don't believe it's.
It is alternating terms.
Yeah, it is alternating terms, but you might want to check and make sure that the ordinance in your folder matches the one that's online.
We can do that.
It says if state law permits, the board may appoint up to three.
Yes, it requires me to appoint up to three associate members.
So that brings me to the question, are the people that Brian has mentioned actually still active members of an appeals board that just hasn't met in ten years?
According to, not a lot of read, their terms have expired.
Three years, three-year terms.
So it's been, if it's been ten years?
There's four people listed in the last town report, two expired in twenty-three and two expired in twenty-four, so I think you're starting over.
So this here is a dilemma.
Yeah.
It is. And, and again, uh, Bridie and, uh, Mr. Raul brought up a couple of good points is one of the continuity issues that I deal with every day here is, you know, one administration will have enacted this or made this change. Another one will have done this and we don't have the continuity. We'll have one thing written in one place and one thing written in another. We're gonna fix that over time, but it is going to take time.
And I think as our town cloud thing is updated with all of our policies, it's a good chance for us to visit each one of those. So I guess at this point, the only option we have is number one, for Brian to reach out and contact the previous members of that appeals board and bring us the policies that we have in existence and writing to the next meeting.
Well, I'll look at the ordinances and policies and I'm almost thinking that maybe, maybe I need to make a call to MMA on this and see what.
The only problem with ordinances is that you need a town meeting to change an ordinance.
Right. In this, but if we don't make a change to this.
Then you go ahead.
We can move forward and put together the board.
What, if you have more than one copy and which ones?
And the alternating terms and all of those things.
Which ones, which ones legit? And then do follow that as written and yes.
Yeah, so we have, we have not enough information to make a decision. So at this point, I think the direction will be to research what is our ordinance or our policy and
And I'll reach out to these three people.
We, now she listed, those five people that you listed, Paul Davis, Eric Stumpf, Rick Telleran, Denny Wark and Cynthia Hall.
Rick would be a good resource even if he can't serve on the board. Both he and Cynthia are former select board members. They have a pretty good working, Paul's got a really good working knowledge of the system.
And Eric has some legal background. Maybe he'd be good one to reach out to to begin with.
MMA may let you do like a emergency. And so our next meeting or something.
Yeah, that's why I'm, uh, I'll start with looking at, looking at our policies and what we've got in place and then.
Make the contact.
Make a contact at MMA and say, this is a situation, what do you advise?
So you're prepared to bring this to the next select board meeting in two weeks? Is two weeks gonna be time sensitive enough for the situation we have that's requiring this bullet?
I, I think it has to be.
Yeah, I don't think, A, the person whose file appeal is going to push you, however, if they, for some reason, they can get the answer they wanted, it could give them status to go to.
To go around this and go to the superior court. But the downside there is, I mean, there really isn't a downside to us, I mean, on that. Uh, but then we don't really want it to go that way because we should be serving the needs of our citizens.
Yeah, I think it'll have it worked out, but you have to.
And if we have to, we can do a special town meeting. That's not, for a single item, that's not that big a deal either.
Which that would be only if we had to change our ordinance so we could appoint five people at once or we'll change it to three. Go do whatever we're gonna do.
Right, so let me take a look at what we've got written down, what I can find that we've got written down and talk to MMA and see what they advise.
Okay. Okay, next item. Item B is donation to Grace Bible Church.
Uh, I'm gonna let Michelle handle that one as well. It's her idea. Which I support, it is her idea.
We confused the community, community room multiple times this past year. And I just think, I mean, the pastor's very good about it. He drops the key off, he picks the key up, he makes sure it's all, like the heat was up, everything's taken care of. And I just thought it might be just a nice gesture for the town to give them a donation for them to use, whether it be the kids or, you know, food pantry, whatever they, they wanted to support.
I've talked this over with my father some. There's some, there's some limitations being a nonprofit in the way they can take money in.
Okay.
And you'll want to talk to the pastor of the church and, and.
When we first started, I offered a donation and they consider it their community outreach, so I'll take that for.
My father's response is he was a deacon in a church, a different church, but, um, for them to take in money, it is strictly just, you, you can't give them, you can't write them a check for use of their building because they're a nonprofit.
But we could just make a donation.
Right.
With little strings attached, like.
Correct, and that, that's, that's how I understood it, but you'll want to have a conversation with him. I'm not saying I'm not for it. I, I just think we need to have a conversation with him and make sure that we can.
Okay.
And I agree, um, they've been very gracious to us as far as, that's, that's a nice space.
I, I mean, he's always been there. He's always helped, um, put the, put everything together, um, drops the key off for me. Um, so I just thought it would be a nice gesture.
It's handicapped, accessible, you know.
It's certainly a good situation. We don't want to take advantage of it.
Exactly.
So, just kind of a thank you back to the church for being there for us.
So what do we want to do? Just have Michelle reach out?
Well, let's have Michelle reach out and then we can.
Make that, make a decision.
Yeah, we can bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay. Item C. Discussion of lot at the corner of Main Street and High Street.
Uh, Mr. Raul, I believe the floor is yours. I will preface this by saying one thing. You told me that you talked to Numberall. Numberall said the town owned it. You talked to the previous board. The board said that Numberall owned it. Uh, Michelle and I did some research on that yesterday and the answer is yes. We both own it. We own this little tiny corner of it and Numberall owns the majority of the lot.
The eighty-two.
Yes. I think that was correct, wasn't it, Michelle?
Okay, so that.
Let me, let me pull that up.
We own a little tiny square next to the bridge.
Right.
Have they owned what their sign is on, I believe?
Yes.
That's a big part of the deal.
Well, I, I believe they own the rest of the lot. Was kind of how I read the, read the property map on that, that we own this little corner. Basically, it looks like access for people to fish in the stream.
They just didn't want to pay, they were paying huge taxes on that little corner and so pick up that and gave it to them. It's happened a bit of a beat, I think.
So anyway, that's where we are with the research I did on the, on the ownership of the lot and go ahead.
But there's no tax revenue from that lot. From what I understand.
As far as I know, they get a tax bill.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I've approached them and they tell me.
I, I have. I have not talked.
They do with it.
I have not talked to Numberall myself, but if they're paying taxes on it, they don't want it and you know, you could probably buy their share off it for a dollar.
I talked to Alex.
Alex.
And Alex talked to his dad and his dad came back and said, no, we gave that, bought back to the town in nineteen seventy-two. He gave a very specific year.
That sounds early than I thought.
Might have been eighty-two, but. He gave me a very specific year on my, what year they did.
Several decades ago.
Yeah. So, and the town has for all these decades paid for moment of that law. So that leads me to still believe that somewhere there is a deed that the town owns this lot or else the town would not have been paying it for moment. But this is, so the winter parking issue, right? Has never been an issue until this last winter.
Okay.
You know, my tenants have parked in the parking lot by the Veterans Memorial and we do good to try and move around. I have a plow on my truck. If the guys miss it, we move cars, I plow it off. Well, last winter, there was some complaints. Well, prior to this new board coming on, there were some complaints brought to me that said, you know, we're gonna make a parking ban, nobody can park here overnight and well, there isn't an ordinance. We've been through this through multiple town managers now and one long rate of the select board that there is no parking ordinance officially. It was never voted in. There is a draft. And I was, whatever, until during business hours, more or less, my car got plowed in in front of a building I own at five o'clock in the afternoon or in the evening. And then I was, anyway. So I just want to resolve this. So I would like to park vehicles there, have my tenants park there. And that's all I'm trying to accomplish is to find some sort of resolution to this, cause like I said, for a decade, my tenants have parked in that parking lot. Now the, you know, the previous board had told me it's not gonna happen next year. We're gonna tow you. So we gotta figure something out here. Do my tenants park then? Or do they get towed? Cause you guys tabled that earlier, so I'm, I'm left unclear.
Right.
As the ordinance, the unadopted ordinance reads, it's the side of the road. It doesn't say anything about that parking lot being off limits from twelve to five AM. So that's why I'm here. We got, I, we gotta figure something out.
So are you suggesting that if the townless angle does own that corner lot, that you're asking for permission to park there or are you asking to purchase it for parking? I'm trying to figure out what you're asking.
At a minimum, permission to park there. You know, ideally, yes, whether it's the town says, here you go, or I go file whatever it is, a quit lane and just take possession of it, cause nobody else wants it. Well, if Numberall doesn't think they own it, I can say park there, that's what happens.
Well, you won't look around, cause right behind you, right behind your property, there's another lot in there that nobody seems to own.
Oh, so, yeah. There is. We've had this conversation before, Brian was involved.
Cause I sat there and I've looked at that.
Okay, so when I bought that restaurant building, according to my real estate attorney, because that lot never sold, that went with that lot. It's the Carlton Mill lot. That was the Carlton Mill feed store. And the way he researched it, he said, there's an acre and a half back there that you own. If they don't want to tax you for it, they'll let them. But I don't, I, I'm not a real estate attorney. I'm just going to help maybe tow it. And yes, we do use the shit out of that lot back there and have a great time and, and it, you know, it's nice to have a little getaway. But I do have a public right, or a right of way across that lot on the corner to go to one oh five and to one eleven and the building in between also has a right of way there.
Do you have, you have a right of way to get down behind your buildings? Do you have parking down there where your tenants could park?
No.
If you were to plow?
No, it's not. It's too grown in.
It's pretty, pretty low in there too.
It's pretty low in there too. I mean.
It's a jungle.
Yeah, it is a jungle. You guys live over on the other side, but.
Well, yeah, and if the stream should happen to flood or have high water, you'd be in, you'd be in trouble down there.
My, my building's gonna be in trouble, but, you know, it hasn't happened so far.
So previously we tabled the parking van because we didn't have enough information to make a decision.
Yes.
Um, and I think this kind of ties in to the same question. The same piece of research and the same, this is all gonna come back to the next meeting.
Well, I guess we need to determine in fact who owns the law. But our maps say that we own a small quarter of it and the Numberall owns the rest.
Don't, don't go by the maps. Maps are notoriously wrong. Find a deed.
So I think the first thing is dig a deed and have the conversation with Numberall as the town manager and get their take on it. See if we can physically look at a deed that gives us a little more of a clue.
I know years ago, when John Simcoe was here, there was talk about behind where Chris has his, um, about who owned Cat's Alley. And John Simcoe was under the impression that Numberall owned it and Numberall told them they didn't. And that was, when was John here? Twenty years ago?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, about, uh.
So it's basically the same scenario. Nobody wants to own, wants to own that corner lot.
Because with John.
It just looked like to me, looking at it, now I'm making the assumption that the Carlton Mill, which is where Numberall is now, also owned the mill on the end of Mill Street at one point, maybe near the end of it all?
Yeah, where the chicken, it used to be a chicken.
It was a chicken house, yeah. Well, if you look in through there, it looks like, you know, applying a little logic, which I know is always a dangerous thing, that probably, uh, Carlton Mills owned pretty much everything behind Main Street, right from High Street to Mill Street. And the confusing thing now is of course there was a dam at the end of Mill Street, which is no longer there. And so there's a lot of low area there that's actually, uh, property that I don't think anybody kind of claims it's.
Is anybody paying tax on it?
Well, that's something we need to figure out, I guess.
I thought, I thought we looked it up.
So who's, who's paying taxes on that property?
On that corner lot, I believe it's Numberall. Because like we said, on the map, we own just a little chunk near the bridge. And then the rest of it looks like it's Numberall.
Yeah. It looks like it probably that Numberall owned the huge chunk of that or Numberall's predecessor. Carlton, I don't know where the connection is between the two, but they, it looked like they owned a pretty good swath all the way from High Street down to Mill Street.
Well, if they had a dam right there, chances are they own both sides of the stream.
You would think so, yes. And the map looks like it was probably that one thing.
So I know about twenty-eight years ago, that's when John was here.
Was it, no?
About that. He had approached us and he was gonna rename Cat's. About that, he had approached us and he was gonna rename Cat's Alley after my nana, where I got my place from. And that's when all the discussion came about is as to who owns it. If you ask Lily Brown up here, she owns all Sangerville. So, if you don't believe her, just ask her.
So that's lot seventy-seven.
Yeah, that's that big one that.
That's the big one.
Yeah.
Right, that's the one that the real estate told me, you know, that you essentially own it, it just.
Cuz on our tax map, it says unknown.
Uh, no, exactly. And I, I tried to get board, you know, right after I bought that, just I'll pay the taxes on it, you know, but nothing happened of it. And then when I, again.
Well, the hard part, the hard part is it's not really, because of wetlands, there's probably not a whole heck of a lot you can do with that.
It's landlocked.
Right.
Nobody.
So the other question I have, if, if we were to move forward to this, has anybody talked to Department of Transportation on the state road, with that both state roads, about making a driveway they had to park in?
Uh, there already is one.
There is, it exists.
Right on, right on High Street.
The High Street side has the.
Yeah, that has an access right there.
And that's what the town, that's a section the town owns, I believe. Cuz it's right next to the bridge is where your access to talking is, I think is, man.
So the previous board told me that the town only owned right where that box for consolidated sits, that was it?
Yeah, I. I, I don't think that's accurate either.
I think the town actually owns all of eighty-two and eighty-two dash one, because why else would we have been, you know, paying it for the mow-in for the last three decades? Numberall doesn't pay for it.
Eighty-two dash one, I think belongs to Numberall.
Right, eighty-two should belong to the town, the way I read it.
Correct.
In the deed. Eighty-two dash one is what Numberall owns where their sign is. And then eighty-two is what the town owns.
Which would be just pretty much backwards of what's written in that. We will research that.
But that, and that's what my real estate attorney had come up with too, was the town owns this section. Numberall owns the other section.
Book eighteen ninety, page two forty-eight.
And then two dash one is where the Numberall sign is.
Book eighteen ninety?
There was three of you.
And what was the rest of that bracket?
And the page is two forty-eight.
So I actually, we'll go on the grid and see. Let's get that myself, right?
Yes, you can't print it unless you have an account, but you don't have to pay for it. Yeah, you don't have to pay. Eight hundred.
Or you, you looked it up? So this is the one that refers to that lot?
Hundred and twenty, sixty-eight by a hundred and twenty on the long side. Or a hundred and ten.
So, this was a discussion, we've had a discussion. Now where do we take our discussion? That's what I need to know.
How many tenants do you have, Chris?
So, there's the father-in-law lives downstairs and my son and his girlfriend are gonna be moving upstairs. My daughter lived there for several years and she bought a place and moved on. My boy has stepped out of the household, proved that he's gonna take care of things. So now, I'm open to allow him to rent for me at a reasonable rate.
How many parking spaces, how many cars?
So it'd be three.
Three parking spaces is what you're talking about?
Right.
Is there three parking spaces on that corner lot?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And room for dumpster, which would be very handy at this point with the trash thing that has just changed. The, uh, the bins, I think are great, but the way it's set up downtown, there might be times when the guy can't get to the bin because my wife's busy and doesn't know he's out there and there's cars parked and I just think a dumpster is a better way to go.
Can I, can I say something about trash things?
Yeah, let's complete this discussion and then we'll, and I'll maintain it.
So like I said, I'm just looking for some sort of resolution here. We, we talked before about, you know, the drainage issue down there. If I own that lot, I can let the state run through it and not even think about it, you know? Let's run a new, another drain down through and, and help. There's, there's more behind it than just, oh, well, I don't want my father-in-law to get towed. You know? There, there is, there's, it's a puzzle.
My, my only fear with us giving up the law is that, and I don't think you would, but down the road, if it was sold and somebody built on it, right now, we, it's pretty visible coming down, down a hill. You put a building there and it's so, it's, it's not gonna be visible.
In the world of real estate, are the, what's the word they use, covenants? So you could actually, you know, you, the town transferred the lot to me. Hypothetically, if the town owns it and they transfer it to, to me, you can actually transfer it to say, this cannot be built on. It can be used as parking only. It can be used as X, Y, Z, and that's it. Look at the, the old Catholic church. There are so many rules with that property. If you wanted to buy the Robinsons' building, there's gonna be rules with that one too. You also have an ordinance about town, or in-town sewer district, the lot size to be buildable to. I hadn't seen that, but that's good information. There is one.
Well, guys, and how, how close you can reach them, relative in some of the state laws.
Yeah, and it also has the footage.
Now, is that the lot where the IGA sat a long time ago?
That is the lot where the IGA was.
Unbelievable, yes.
And, and, and the crazy part is when they bolded that, they pushed it right into the stream. I found, I found a, an old bottle down there that was still full. And I asked Doug, I was like, what was this? Cuz the labels, and that was the, what do you call it? Something about Sunday vanilla, but it was really, it was liquid, it was what it was. But you couldn't sell liquor on Sunday, so they had the big bottle of vanilla. And that was just available for sale on Sundays. So.
History lesson. Okay, so at this point, um, there's no action we can take. This is just discussion. Um, from this discussion, um. I'm gonna go research the deed and make sure we find out, find the actual deeds. I'll have a conversation with Numberall and I'll bring something back for a report at the next meeting. Okay. And I think this, I think this lumps together with this, with this parking thing too, to a degree. Well, I, I don't, I guess my thought is if we can get it so that he can use that space or once. Whether he owns it or not. Whether he owns it or not. I mean, it may solve some problems for everybody. I don't know if we could use it, if we could label it as a not-town-maintained parking space and retain ownership of it. In other words, we don't have to plow it. Or mow it, or. It's something to think about. Okay, that was discussion. Real quick in between, Rick, you had a question about trash.
Just cuz trash was brought up, just Sangerville went to Dover, I mean Dexter, no, a few years back, we used to have Dover. I'd love to see you go back to Dover. I'm paying taxes to use Dexter though. Haven't been there until just the other day. I brought a bottle of shingles down, um, from Sangerville and it charged us a hundred and fifty dollars to our little bit.
Oh, my God.
Did a job in Dover and brought shingles down and it didn't touch us, so.
Well, yeah, that's probably because.
Thank you for Dover. Going back to Dover for.
I agree with them. I refuse to go to Dexter. I take all my trash to work with me because I will not go over there because it's not a pleasant place.
You know which one?
I go, I take my trash to work with me every day I go. I will not go to Dexter. I have, they are the most unfriendly people I've ever met.
You said Dexter, no, you wanna go?
I will not go there.
I won't, never will.
I hope, yeah.
And he was, he was rude as hell to us.
So let's do this, if, if, uh, if, if you guys wanna bring this forward, what I'd suggest is you have that conversation with Michelle and we'll get it on the agenda to have a discussion over it.
I have my idea.
Chris?
So you're gonna have to put it out to bid, and that's what happened before, was they put it out to bid and Dexter came in at a lower price so the select board moved. When they did that. No, it isn't. The Dover went up on their price, but when they did that, I lost a chunk of, I've lost a, a big customer. Cuz we used to go take our trash to Dover and bring the bottles back, count them and give them the money.
Yeah.
And when the select board made that change, I went to pick up bottles and they said, no, you're not a.
Yeah.
So, so I lost that and, you know, it was.
So if you guys feel really strongly about it, my suggestion is to get it listed for, for our agenda for two weeks from now and we'll address it as an item if you feel strongly about it.
But trap would just install a lot of them.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Yep, so let's, let's.
I'm gonna rent a few hours from work for a dump instead of going pan the trash pickup. Pan and dump it, little pair. Double dip it.
Well, let's get, one of, one of you get with Michelle and, and get it listed on our agenda and we will, we will look at it.
For dumpster?
For trash pickup when I was making money off it before.
Right.
You know?
Right.
But I don't have time on the weekends to go to Dexter cuz you, you went from a fifteen-minute drive to an hour round trip.
Exactly, exactly.
Depends on which end of town you live on.
We are slightly closer, but not that much, honestly.
I have my trash picked up, but it doesn't matter to me either way because Trashbusters just changed the route. But, um, yeah, I heard.
And your trash still goes to Dover.
Yeah, I heard lots of.
Yeah, I know.
Lots of trash, I'm missing the town cuz now they have to go to Dexter. And on the Dexter end of town, they're like, hey!
Trust me, I was on the budget advisory committee in Dover when Trashbusters came up and that was a long evening. All right, we're gonna move on. If any of you feel strongly about it and wanna take this to further discussion, get with Michelle and she'll list it on our agenda for, for a future select board meeting.
Next meeting?
If you get with her, she'll get it on the agenda. It'll be two weeks from now.
Yeah, I, I made a note on my notes.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to list that on our agenda for two weeks from now to discuss the trash?
Great idea.
Okay. So noted. Next item, item D is assessor contract. I went and met with Hamlin Associates Incorporated Monday, I guess. I understood historically, within the last year or so, there were some issues. Uh, I sat down and met with Josh. He was very positive, very willing to continue work with Sangerville. They said they'd work. I believe he said they've worked. Hamlin Associates has done the assessing for Sangerville for, since nineteen eighty-two. I think they do a good job. I think they, what they've gone up to on a rate is reasonable. And I've talked to some other town managers around the area about some of the assessing nightmares that are out there. Uh, my recommendation is we've got a good, tried and true assessing company willing to work with us that you gentlemen sign that contract and we have to stay with Hamlin Associates for another, another year. We addressed this four months ago, I think, when we first, when we were first elected as a board. That was when he told me he quit on you guys. He quit on us. And we had a, we had an emergency renegotiation session, so to speak, a work session and, and had a meeting with Josh and. Matter of fact, the amount that you agreed on at that meeting is pretty much what the, uh, that's what he said. Assessing contract is gonna be for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I see it's up a hundred a month, but that's. He, does he do long-term contract, like three-year?
We can ask him. But that's what he handed me when I walked out the door. And I was happy that he said he was gonna continue working with us.
Oh, I hear you.
He will do a long-term contract.
I, I, I would personally rather see a multi-year contract.
That has to go before the.
The people?
People.
This contract does not, however.
No.
This contract is basically what we decided before we had the special town meeting on it.
Your contract has to go before the.
Now, is this exactly the same money that we had discussed then? That's what I wanted to say. Uh, it's.
July twentieth, yeah, it's the same price?
The same.
Yeah, cuz you guys have.
No, yeah.
So it looks. Twenty thousand six hundred. I don't think it is because I thought it was sixteen sixty-six sixty-six was what we agreed on and this is seventeen sixty-six sixty-six.
He did the sixteen sixty-six sixty-six to get him to December.
Okay.
That was just to clean up the year.
Cuz we divided out, I remember that. He quoted, he quoted twenty thousand six hundred for the fiscal year twenty-five. That's what that contract in front of you is. Okay. So seeing this, I, I would make a motion that we sign the contract and submit it to Josh. Cuz if you look at your, your legal title and the position you're in, you're, you're on the hook for being the assessor, so you, you wanna make sure you have a good assessor's agent. No board of selectmen in their right mind would take that on in this day and age. We've already had this discussion with the people and I'm good with that. We'll just move forward with that for not to get. I wish it enjoyed. Yeah.
Guys, both of you need to work on your deed. It's November, huh?
November sixth. Maybe to Josh.
I didn't do it.
Michelle? Can you take care of, make sure that it's back to him, Associates? So, now it's done, moving on, um, item E is board appointments and we, we've discussed some of that previously. Okay, this is what. Michelle handed me. Here, I'll, I'm gonna hand that back to you and let you explain to the board what they need to do is.
Okay, so you had signed the contract with Brian. You had signed an appointment making him town manager. However, all these other little appointments such as, um, public health officer, tax collector, deputy treasurer, deputy registrar voters, nine-one-one officer, um, and deputy town clerk, those need to be done. So that is appointing him to all the deputy stuff that he does.
His cross off health officer. Okay, so we'll, we'll sign each one of them. Are they all different?
These, these are his oats. This covers everything and then he has his way up to each one.
The reason, the whole reason I was health officer in Dover was because Jack called my office one day and baked in wine until I finally gave in. We'll let Josh date this one. Okay. Does that cover everything we need on that?
I believe so, yeah.
And you just do the oats tomorrow in the office, is that how you do it? She's.
She swears at me every day anyway.
At least they don't trust that.
Okay, moving on. Item F is grant research update.
Uh, one of the things that we agreed that I would be making a priority is in my time as town manager here is researching grants, particularly on the building next door, to see what I could come up with. Uh, I've already kind of alluded to this, if not talked about it directly earlier in the meeting. I got online, this was research, found this national historic preservation grant that's a seven, up to thirty thousand dollars, seventy-five, twenty-five match. And I'm working on, I'm working on writing that grant in hopes that maybe we could get a portion of the roof on Town Hall paid.
The question I have, if, if we apply for a grant with matching funds, the piece that we paid, is that able to come out of the Town Hall budget or does that have to be approved by the voters?
Voters.
So if that grant is accepted, or i- if, if they pick us for that grant, we'd have to have an emergency town meeting to expend the twenty-five percent?
The submission date is, is December thirteenth. It might hit, if we get awarded, it might hit close enough so we could slide it into the town meeting anyway.
So you need, basically what you're looking for is permission to apply.
That'll, that'll work.
And then if we're accepted, we'll just need to bring it to the voters?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding as well.
Is that your understanding, Brian?
Just read the article above accepting grants. That's in the Town Board and if that matches, then you're. I know, I know you can't, I think you can apply, but you can't accept. And I don't know if you more likely to get the grant if you already have that acceptance. I don't know that. That's probably a worrying question.
And the other question is where we've already, where the town has already allocated money for this project. Is it, is it okay to take it out of the budget?
That's why you really need to read that warrant article. I, I know there's one in there every year that says you you only accept grants that don't have.
Matching funds.
Matching funds.
Right.
But I don't know exactly what it says, so.
And that's what I'm wondering, if you, if you have, if you have an approved budget for a construction project and there is a grant, do you have to go back for the matching funds and where do you find that?
You might want to think about how you word the warrant article next.
Correct, correct. But for tonight's discussion, I think we, we should move forward with applying for that grant.
Look at it this way, if we get awarded, we don't have to accept the award without, I mean, we can pull together a quick emergency town meeting and say, look folks, this is what's in front of us.
Right.
These are the ramifications. This is what you voted on at the last town meeting and, you know, we.
I'm not trying to be a negative Nancy about you chasing money, I'm glad you are. Just want to make sure that.
Well, seeing that on our interview, you said that was something you wanted me to do.
And we, we applaud you for it. Just making sure we dot the i's and cross the t's, that's all.
I agree. They absolutely have.
They cite the right article.
This is how you get people mad at you for not being transparent.
So do we need any motions? Can we move forward?
I, I think I can just continue to work on it. I just basically wanted you guys.
Information.
No, going rogue here.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item twelve. Is gonna be just a brief report from the town manager before we all.
Uh, let's see. Record storage, we've already covered Town Hall updates. I think we beat that one to death. New deputy clerk, Kelsey. She is doing an awesome job. We are very happy to have her and we hope she stays with us a long time.
Forever.
And that, that'll work.
I love going to work every day.
Budget committee policy, we've talked about that. Mr. Dobson and I met here, I think right the day after the last meeting and we talked about his situation. I believe that, you know, I have a clear understanding of what he's saying and I think we should include that into the road budget for next year. And so we're gonna move forward with that. Is that a fair?
Yeah, I was gonna recommend following this, talking about the road business, so yeah, it sounds good today.
Okay.
Microsoft three sixty-five, we've covered that. Town cloud, Mill Street issue, I think we beat that one to death. Issue on Route twenty-three. Lance and I have had email contact with the attorney. This was on last meeting's to-do list and we're waiting for the judge to.
We're referring to the Nesbit property?
We are.
Okay.
And so we're still waiting for the decree. The attorney has told us as soon as the judge signs the decree, uh, he will let us know. Matt, do you want to give a quick update on where you're here on the issue you had out there the other night?
Yeah, we were just called out there. I think it was, I don't even remember the date right off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Ten twenty-nine?
Yeah, twenty-eight.
Twenty, okay.
But we got called out for an explosion and outside fire. When we, when I got there, Troy had a fire going. It was a high fire danger day, so no permits were being issued. I pulled in and the fire was built in a hole. So we began to start burying what was there being burned. Uh, we ended up, after struggle, got him to stop burying and, and found that it was a lot of illegal materials. Rubber hoses and hydraulics and plastic and just stuff. So that was reported to Forestry and I believe they've cited him as well. I think that's caused some issues with the sale of the property as well. So that's the last I knew of it.
Uh, I think that was everything I had on that. Lost my place here. Uh, Veterans Day, we already talked about some miscellaneous items. Uh, I already mentioned. Mr. Stumpfeld cleared up the tree situation for us, was very gracious about doing that. I've been visiting town cemeteries to develop an inventory of stones that need to repair and tree work that needs to be done for next year's budget. About halfway through. We, uh, Kelsey pointed out to us the other day that we've got some uneven pavement, potential safety situation in front of the town office.
She was so graceful.
I was, I was, I was, I was not even gonna mention that piece of it, Kelsey.
It's all good.
But, you know, one of the things, the first thing that came in my mind was, you know, are you okay?
I was happy it was me, not someone else.
Followed up by the thought of, how many times have you been out with the ambulance for eighty-year-old women that have done this and fractured it? Yeah. So I've talked to Scott Reynolds and he's gonna get some cold patch on that for us here when he gets some time in the next week or so to level that up and make that a safer spot. I got access to the former town website. That was a little bit of a challenge, but we're now posting on that again. We beat the winter parking ban to death here. Had a conversation with Jason Higgins about the Town Rec Committee and, uh, well, Kelsey took care of this for me, but made arrangements with Chris Newt to get the works out of Meannick and Center Pond here. He thought this week, didn't he?
Hope this week.
Uh, becoming the town's nine-one-one officer is not just as easy as saying, hey, I'm nine-one-one officer and looking stuff up online. So I, I have registered with the state, I'm jumping through all the hoops, I've got training to do, but that process is underway. I already discussed Hamlin Associates. Tended regional town management meeting in Dover Fox Park last week. I think that's probably a good use of a couple hours a week to go over there. Especially where it's thirty seconds from my house. As we talked about earlier, the South Sangerville Greens Road, I've been kind of going down there regularly and just checking the status on access on that road. And I'm spending a lot of time researching past records and trying to, as I said, find continuity between policies and everything and decisions here. So that's going to be ongoing for years. Road Commissioner's report. I contacted Alcina. Do you have any idea how to pronounce her last name?
Brennan Stool, I think.
Brennan Stool, okay. Good enough, from Dynamic Consulting Limited, Maine. They're representing us on the FEMA storm damage grants. She stated that she would expect we would receive money in the next two months, but we're keeping updated. Uh, I believe the total on that's thirty-nine thousand. We finished the work on the Borough Road. Total cost of all Borough Road projects came in just a hair under thirty-five thousand dollars. So I think we did quite well on that. Scheduled, uh, Scott Reynolds to replace some corner signs on the Sangerville Lime Road that have got knocked down. Uh, we received our final bill from Grader Works, our bill for the final grading of the year, that was seventy-three thirty-five. Uh, we've determined the Maple Street, we will remove the dysfunctional culvert and just fill in that spot in the driveway for now. We'll plan to ditch Maple Street, replace culverts next year as well as pave Maple Street, hopefully money's there. Have begun work on the West Road and again, our goal on the West Road is to make sure that that is passable year-round for emergency vehicles and obviously residents. And just an update on our current summer roads budget. With everything we've done to date, we are thirty-four, thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-four, uh, three thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars, thirty-two cents over, which we are taking that from the two hundred thousand that you gave us permission to dip into at the emergency select board meeting on that Article twenty-six, uh, due town meeting. And anything you want to add over to Josh? Did I hit everything?
Uh, the only thing that I, that isn't really gross, did you print that email?
I did, but I don't have it. Sorry. Is it in his stuff?
What is?
I have printed it off, um, the email from.
Scott.
Scott, yeah. Oh, it's on the wall. I bet you it's on the wall.
I remember signing it. I think you had me sign it.
Okay, so this is Scott Reynolds' bill. I wanted to read this out loud so that everybody in town knew. Scott, he brought two loads of loan to Veterans Memorial to fill flower boxes and spread on new lawn area. Was excavator seeded and spread straw. The loan was donated by Haley's, the straw was donated by Cleve's Farm and Scott and his worker, he donated the labor and the use of his excavator that day. So everything to finish up, what we're doing for this year, I think, on the Veterans Memorial, that last day was all done by Domation.
That's cool.
Yep. I just wanted everybody to know that.
Very good.
Thank you, Scott.
The one final thing I wanted to say before I closed out my report is I had no clue how labor-intensive the election process is. And I got a heck of an education the last month and I would like to publicly recognize especially Michelle who worked tirelessly and very professionally and did a great job with that. Kelsey helped out and learned a lot in the process. And the three volunteers, uh, your mother, Diana and Kathy. I, the work they put in is, I mean, this is meaningful service to the town. Other than that, I'm done.
Can Zora just have a couple things?
Okay.
Along with the fact that Kelsey has just really stepped up to the limit, she's committed and done extra hours without being asked, um, has been a real good fit to the office. But Brian and Kelsey have signed up for motor vehicle class the first of December. Kelsey has also signed up for her notary so that we can do notary work. One thing I would like to do, if it's okay with, with the board, I always felt that notary work was a public service and Sangival actually charges for it. Um, I would like to see if we could go without that fee and be a, be a public service. My notary doesn't cost me anything. It came with me from Eight Islands. And we're paying for her to get her notary, so.
And it's minimal. I think it's like a hundred dollars total.
Fifty bucks.
Right.
Or fifty, yeah.
So, and we don't make that much money off them. So it wouldn't be a detriment to losing money to them.
Can I respond to the report? Everybody is happy as, is, is really happy with Borough Road work. So I want to let you know, we, we all recommend keep the good curvy to the hell of each other.
Thank you. All right, we, I will pass that on to him tomorrow. He'll be happy to hear that.
Yes.
On Mill Street, um, last year, last winter, um, the school bus, we went out to pick the kids up and somebody was in the turnaround. And so every day this woman would back up. It could be, be, just so dangerous, you know, with, um, animals, dogs, kids, people, you know. And so one day I stopped her and asked her why and she said that some of the, I think some of the tenants in the, in the had over four cars or whatever and they were parking down in there. So I did, um, I did contact Clint because he does plowing on the road. And I think he had vehicle tow, but I don't think there's a sign or anything there. We're talking signs, so I don't know if that would be a good sign.
I'm gonna add that in the. We'll try to get that all figured out.
Do we have a policy or anything on that? Notary, um.
The notary? I don't know.
Is there anything that states somewhere that we have to take this or whatever?
I have not seen that.
I think you saw it.
I've been looking through, I've been through our policy book multiple times now. I figure about six more and I'll have it memorized. And I have not seen anything on notary.
What is your recommendation? That just residents and notary services are free? That's what you're recommending?
Yep, just, um, we're a customer service center. We help them with everything. They're coming for, you know, living wills and stuff like that and I just think it'd be just a good service to the public.
We can move on that tonight if we want, if we think. Will I make a motion then that we, um, extend the notary service free of charge to the residents of the town of Sangival? Let's vote.
Thank you.
All right. Nobody has anything else? Make a motion, will you adjourn this meeting? Or adjourn?